Good morning. John Ward, I'm your CRA director and I'm joined today by a number of particularly important individuals. I think we're having the AIA conference for the county here today. I've got half of the architects in town. Alfonso Hernandez is with us today. He's our architect on the Sticks Alley project, which we'll be discussing in a second. And of course, behind us over here, Rick Gonzalez, Darren Engel with REG, which is our Sunset Lead Architects. Who else is with us? The Cooper Construction Company representatives Veronica and Jackie are here with us today. Hold your hands up, please. There are contractors on the project. Joelle Flowers is with us with Design to Form, which is doing our part, too. So, today we're going to talk about primarily the...
And do you have new staff that you would like to introduce?
Yes, ma'am. I do have new staff that I'd like to introduce also. Today's the first day for Sarah Blake, who's our new project manager in the north end. So, welcome, Sarah.
So, she'll be doing Northwood and...
She will. We're not focused so much on the geography, but specific projects, but she'll engage with the Northwood Village immediately. So, we'll get started on that right away.
Awesome.
And other staff are with us today. Obviously Gina is our project manager on these projects, which we're talking about. And I've got everybody with us today. Alicia Nguyen is with us. Allison Justice, my senior project manager. So, anyway, let's get started. For the benefit of the commissioners that weren't here when we acquired the property, this is where it all began. In the early 1920s, around 1926, they started building projects over there. And this is where the Sunset started. Obviously downstairs, a garage, and upstairs, a roof garden. And in fact, it says Roof Garden on the sign there. You entered by that circular door, round top door there, went up a staircase and enjoyed the evening. And you can see, I want you to look at as we're going through these slides, the deliberate progress of this project because they always knew from the gun that they were going to build something much more significant. And you can see from the design of the building how they poured those precast columns already. And as they moved to the second floor, they're filling in with concrete blocks and going on. So, I have an idea that the Sunset kind of grew as they acquired material, more than anything else. A lot of times, there were projects that were torn down in Palm Beach, for instance, and they went and acquired some things. And I think you're going to see some elements of that as we move forward. But this is where it all started. In 1942, 13, about 15 years later, this is where they had gotten to. And I want you to note in particular, the round top windows in the front of the building and that whole set of doors in the center there, and they had that little balcony there. So, as I said, this has nothing to do with the architecture of the building as it started out. It's just kind of coming together as parts and pieces, I think, became available to them. I love the barrel top roof that they put on it instead of a flat top commercial building that you typically see in a lot of these areas. This is where we've gotten to in 1942. And inside that barrel top roof on the second floor of this building was a literally two-story ballroom with a mezzanine around the outside. This is Lionel Hampton on Vibes in his orchestra. Place was packed. This happened on a regular basis, drew a fabulous crowd, and they're having a great time. This is what we're coming back to. And I brought this with you. As we're going into the building now, we're in the process now of selective demolition, and we're looking in the building and we're finding things. And some of the things we're finding are old paper records that they literally had in a back storage room that hadn't seen the light of day in probably 50 years. This is a telegram from 1935, and it's from a booking agent in New York City. And the telegram reads, it's to William Mitchell, who was the manager of the club at the time, and it says, "That much belated tour with Erskine Hawkins and the original Bama State Collegians, direct from the Ubangi Club, approaches reality." The Ubangi Club was in New York. "Stop. Boys will be in Florida middle of December. Stop. We'll advise in a few days the exact date. Stop. Kindest regards." And he signed off on it. This was part of, it shows you the history of the Sunset. This was part of what I've referred to in the past as the Chitlin Circuit. And I gave my staff, hold the book up, and I'm happy, I would love to get a copy for all of the commissioners, just so you can read it. This is fascinating reading on how the Chitlin Circuit, loosely organized group of black clubs, organized all over the South and in the West for probably 30 years. During segregation, this is how you worked your way through the territory. They had things they called Territory Bands. And the bands moved through a certain part of the area, and there were places they could go and play. And the Sunset was certainly one of them. So, you can see, this is evidence of exactly that. Here's a band, Erskine Hawkins, he's coming through the area. We're reaching out to you, we want to book him. Erskine Hawkins, he did a tune called Tuxedo Junction, by the way, in the late '30s. And this is what we have today. So, in 2017, this is the building that we acquired, of course. We got it a little bit before that. There's an apartment building there, which is gone now. And what we wanted to do was, as we approached, looking at the Sunset and what we were going to do with it, the conversation was, we got a grant from the Knight Foundation called the Cities Challenge Grant, National Award. And they ask you a series of questions. And one of the questions was, what are your biggest threats for the facility? And of course, when you do historic restoration, preservation work, and I've done this with REG and Rick for a number of years now, for literally decades in a number of projects, but the challenges are typically pretty much the same. There are two major challenges. If the termites stop holding hands, the building falls down. Or typically, they are building a roadway through town. And of course, your building, which was built 100 years ago, is sitting right in the middle of where the new highway wants to go. We didn't have either of those problems here. This is where you want to be in a hurricane. It is a fortress. It was the largest probably concrete ballroom in the southeast at the time it was built. And they certainly advertised it as such. It was safe. Back in the '30s, they had a fire on this entire block, and every building on the block burned down except Sunset. So, she's a keeper. So, in this particular instance, the challenge was, not those things, but the challenge was, what if we go over and spend literally millions of dollars of the public's money, of your money, of the community's money, and the community doesn't accept it? That's our challenge. What if we go and do this thing for the community, instead of doing it with the community, and they do not accept it? So, therein lies the first challenge, aside from just the physical challenges. When we acquired the property, we got, number one is the Sunset itself, and then there's an apartment building below it. And then we also acquired the block in front of it. And at the time, there were three or four apartment buildings there. Subsequent to this shot, we've also acquired the northern half of the block that the Sunset's on as well. So, we own literally those two blocks and some other property south of us on Seventh Street there. So, that's what we're looking at. So, the first thing we started doing was talking to the community. We could have been at this point with you, showing you plans and things, a year before we are doing it right now. And we took that year to deliberately go out and engage the community and go and talk to them about what they wanted to see and the kind of things that they wanted, the activities, and what they wanted to build. And I have to do a shout out to Alicia now. Alicia has taken the lead on our community engagement program and has been fabulous doing it. So, she has her PhD in Applied Cultural Anthropology. I didn't even know what that was. I'm not sure I still do. And here's what we did. Alongside the various foundations we were working with, we were asking people, what do you want to see here? What do you want to do here? And that sort of thing. And we didn't ask them to fill out a lot of surveys, which we knew they weren't going to do. We wanted to make it really simple. Just show us right now what you want to see. What do you do in the Northwest? Why are you here? All of these kinds of things. And you see, just, not because I picked this slide, but that upper right one says, how many years have you spent there? Nobody's here a little bit of time. Everybody's here a long time. So, we've got engaged communities. And in a community which is primarily absentee-owned rental property, this is significant. There are a lot of people over there that rent for decades, literally. So, because it's rental property, doesn't mean that they're not engaged in your community. We did a pop-up park event in which we literally built all of the furniture with the community members and had great events. And again, during this entire process, and there were dozens and dozens of these kinds of events and meetings, during the entire process, we're talking the entire time about what we want to do here, and what do you want to do here, and what do you want to see here?
I think one of the most exciting things is that the people who are involved are people who actually live in the neighborhood. And that, thanks to Alicia and you and the others, getting those people out to talk about their own neighborhood, is so important.
Well, that's the spin-off, too. We were just talking about the spin-off to the neighborhood from the educational programs that we're doing at Northmore. The spin-off in this community from not only redoing this is that we have a much more engaged community. Before, there weren't people over there that felt they had a voice that needed to be heard in City Hall, or who do I talk to, and that sort of thing. So, the attitude in the community about everything in general, forget the Sunset, is much improved and much changed. I think the chief would agree to that. So, after we had a series of meetings with them, then we did a park mock-up in which we took that vacant land, we'd torn down all of the apartment buildings, and we just wanted to do a mock-up event where we took the things, the input that they told us and the kinds of things they wanted to see, and we wanted to try them. So, we had street painting, lots of educational opportunities. The kids had a fabulous time. I will tell you that that swing never had fewer than three kids on it at any time. And the success of the project was that they literally broke the swing. I don't know how you break a tire swing, but they broke the swing. Great concert. And here's the takeaway. Family building in the park. This is what was going on here. It was a community coming together in a place where they'd never had this kind of an activity, never had this kind of an asset, and anticipating and looking forward to the day when they would have something like this. And this spoke volumes to me. The question was, do you feel weird being across the street from the Sunset? It was a bar, legendary, and all this kind of thing, and here's a park there. Is that going to make you feel weird playing here? And the kid says, "I feel welcome to relax. I can't wait to come back. I feel like I finally have a place to come." So, this is the community reaction before we even get started. So, now we're engaged. Selective demolition is what's going on right now at the Sunset itself. And this is a panoramic shot of the ballroom that I just showed you, full of folks. In the 1970s, they built it as two floors of apartments. And so, what we're doing now, the first thing that we did was we had to go in and clean up primarily all of the black mold and conditions that were existing upstairs, lots of leaks in the ceilings, been leaking for years, and the apartments. And you can see, interesting in this picture, the difference in the two colors is the first and second floor of the ballroom. So, we're still tearing things out and looking at conditions of ceilings and things like that. Some of the boards that'll need to be replaced, we're looking at, getting started on that very soon. And as we're doing this, we came across this great piece of work. No dancing in the balcony. Can you imagine? I don't know what that was for. I do know what it was for. They didn't want it to fall down. The interesting thing that we can't determine, we haven't figured it out yet, is you can see it says "West" on it, too. All four sides of the room had "North," "South," "East," and "West" on it. So, I guess maybe you got your tickets, you sat on the north side or west side, or whatever it was. And they had numbers around the room. So, we're going to preserve that, of course, in some fashion. We're not sure how the finishes are going to work and all, but anything that's indicative of the history of the facility will be preserved. And it got us to here. With the work of REG and Darren in particular, Darren Engels, this is the existing, on the left, of course, Sunset Ballroom. And on the right, a 7,000, more or less, square foot addition to the facility. And the ballroom and lounge itself are about 14,000 square feet. 14? Am I right? And the work, here's a site plan, a site plan. Down the bottom, you can see the Sunset, the addition. And then the additional space that we've acquired to the north is where parking will be. And we're also creating an entrance to the facility on the north side, too. So, you can enter from the parking lot and come straight in the back. So, what we have in mind, obviously, is safety, security, lots of parking availability for everybody. It'll be surrounded by a picket fence of some sort. We'll have great security, but also a good way to get right in and out instead of having to go around the block. Now, this is hard to read, I know. But the original building is, of course, on the left here. And then the 7,000 square foot addition to the right is here. I'm showing you the first floor. The lower portion of this is the bar itself. Now, when we acquired the building, the entire first floor was a bar. What we're envisioning now is using the lower half, more or less, as the bar. And then we're going to introduce food service there as well. In the old days, in the '30s, they used to get the food from places like the Silver Kitchen or something like that. People would bring food in. So, there was no controlled food or consistency of it. Larry Fields was running Wednesday night clam bakes and things like that in the parking lot, literally. So, there's never been food service here, never a kitchen. So, the main complaints in the Sunset are no kitchen, and the bathrooms were in abysmal shape. I mean, abysmal shape. So, most of the new wing will be taken up by those kinds of support services. A major, commercial kitchen on the first floor, big bathrooms, and also a great entranceway. The good thing about, I want to point out about this shot, is for church folks that do not want to necessarily go into a lounge, but take advantage of the restaurant there, they'll be able to take and go in on the entrance on the right there into the new building. There'll be a specific entrance. You go in and down a hallway and go right into the restaurant. You don't have to go into the bar. Want to have a drink with your meal? You should, but you don't have to go in through the bar itself to bring the family and things like in there. So, we hope that that will encourage a lot more folks that haven't been using it to use it in the future. Second floor, this is the ballroom. And of course, the ballroom is going to have, be restored to its great wooden floor. It's all concrete now, of course. And then to the right, that strip down there is a pre-function area. And you'll recall, when you go to the Civic Center, for instance, you're waiting on the outside in the hallways to go in. They do the pre-functions in the hallway. And this is envisioned to be that same kind of a feel. You'll have an area where bars can be set up or food service a little bit while they're waiting to go into an event, like a concert and that sort of thing. And then, of course, the third floor is not truly a third floor. It's the mezzanine of the second floor. And that's the mezzanine around the outside. You see the stage at the end. And this will lead out onto a roof garden, which they never had before in the new addition. So, there'll be bathrooms out there. The green room for the entertainers, which again, they never had, will be in part of the new facility. And then the majority of that to the right-hand side will be a great roof garden to take it back to where they started from. It's the Sunset Roof Garden all over again, 80 years later. So, we have, the preliminary guaranteed maximum price is being developed as we speak. All of these things are moving on us. We have just now gotten to the point in the design that you're seeing today. These are all plans that I literally got Friday. So, this is brand-new stuff. As we're going along with that, Jackie and his team are developing a guaranteed maximum price for the renovation of the facility. So, we're functioning right now in kind of a hail mary $6.2 million estimate for historic renovations and restoration work. The $6.2 million is fully budgeted in the CRA's 2017, '18, and '19 budgets. And I wanted to point out that the CRA has acquired a million-dollar grant, two $500,000 grants from the state of Florida to help us fund this. They have, we have an opportunity perhaps to get another $500,000 from them, but they've changed the rules a little, so we may not qualify this year. But that's where we are in the Sunset.
Great. Questions for Ms. Ward?
As I go on, you can see in this street view, up at the top is the Sunset. The green square is across the street from, just as south of the Sunset, is the new Heart and Soul Park, which is also being designed. Joelle's here. She's showing us today kind of an estimated rendering of what the park might look like. And of course, that significant tree that we've got, it's not as easy to appreciate what it will be in the floor plan here. But you can see that there's a meandering, kind of a piano keys feel to the sidewalk as it goes through the park itself. And it's divided into play areas. There are, let's see if it shows, this will show up on me. In this area, there's playground equipment and a little mound for a hill here. And this is a big open area. And then there'll be parking in addition to that down here. Head-in parking, which I think you can see in the sketch there, on the right there. That'll be those kind of cement blocks with grass growing through it. So, it'll still have the feel of the park, but it'll have the opportunity of some close-end parking in the front there. The key to the Heart and Soul Park, and we've had a whole series of meetings with the community to help plan this facility as well, but the key to this thing is the art component to it. This is going to tell, through a series of murals on these small walls and messages in the concrete, on the sidewalks and things, it's going to tell the story of the African-American experience in Palm Beach County, starting with the sticks and on through today, warts and all. It's the story that the community wants to tell. It's going to be done and executed by local African-American artists. It'll be done in a permanent material. So, the park is going to be a great place to go and play, but it's also going to be a place to go and be educated, too. So, we're pretty excited about that. So, the art component will be very strong, and the story will be even stronger. Costs for the park design and build-out are budgeted $1,006,000. In our current 28 CRA budget, we think that we'll probably cover it. And again, we're at the point now where these designs, I literally got that elevation this morning. So, the designs are evolving as we're going along. Numbers may move around a little bit, but we think that's a good number. And the third component of the conversation this morning, because they're all related, Sunset, Sunset Park, is down below it here is Sticks Alley. It's the, you can see the brown piece there. Sticks Alley does not exist today. You can see Seventh Street and an alleyway, which is this. This is the Queen of Shiba. And everybody knows the Queen of Shiba Restaurant. So, we were looking at ways to create a mixed-use development that supported the activities of the Queen of Shiba, and again, gave them additional business opportunities in the area. So, we are carving out an alleyway and on, let's see. The buildings there, let's look at one more. I want to show you this. These are pairs of shotgun-like wooden structures. The ones on the top are closer to Seventh Street. And the ones that are closer to Seventh Street will retain the look of classic shotgun houses in the same wood structure. And we'll show you a rendering on it in a second there. And then we'll contemporize the lower half. And the vision here is that these pieces, as you can see, as you can see in the elevation, on the top line, you can see just a classic again shotgun, which would be the northernmost structures, and then the more contemporary one to the rear there. You can see how they live together. And the vision is that for potential uses in this mixed-use piece, on the left side, we see the use potentially of a restaurant, where you could have the kitchen facility back in the back unit, and then the front unit is where you serve inside. And then maybe there's some outdoor seating as well. The center one is a live-work option, where you could have bedroom and bathrooms and your living facility in the rear portion, and then move to the front and have an operating business there, whether it's, you know, some sort of a boutique or shop. And on the right-hand side, you see a retail option, where both of those ends are retail stores. So, the vision here is that we want to position this so that the community, we've had great interest, by the way, on this already. We want to have the ability to sell these at some point to the business owners and have them participate in ownership. And that's really the key to making this thing work. It's possible that you could have partners to go in this, each that had two businesses, and each one could have one of each. You could have a guy that bought the entire thing and leased out a portion of it, or something like that. But we're just now examining the potential uses for the facility. I think Alfonso did a fabulous job coming up with this concept. And again, you can see here how the classic on the right shotgun feeling lives with the contemporary to the rear. And we think that mix is going to make it architecturally very interesting and be very attractive to potential users. We are going to take the one existing shotgun that was able to be rehabilitated and relocated a little bit to the west there as part of this complex, and we'll rehab it and get it set up for a yoga studio that's already shown interest in coming in there. So, with that, we're estimating relocation rehab of the shotgun structures at $1,003,000. We've got $855,000 in our current budget anticipating this. And of course, then next year's budget, we'll finish funding it, if you're supportive of it. The alleyway costs themselves and Seventh Street in front of this project, Seventh Street is an ongoing phased project to rebuild Seventh. And we've already done the first phase on it, from Tamarind to Division. And then we'll go from Rosemary to Sappidilla in this phase, too. Eventually, a year after this, probably we'll have entire Seventh Street rebuilt. And those will be funded by the CRA bond that's pending, subject to your approval. So, that's the three projects.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, questions? You overwhelmed us with information.
Well, I've got all my experts here for questions.
I just have a comment. I've attended a few of the community meetings and didn't know the extent of it, but just wanted to say thank you for doing that. I think that that will help with the success of this project tremendously.
Thank you.
Commissioner James?
Thank you. This is very exciting, exciting for that part of our city. Where are we in terms of timing? How much longer for demolition? And when can we start seeing shovel and dirt?
Commissioner, we've already started the selective demolition at the Sunset itself. We've still got work to do on that. The roof in particular is, and of course, we're in the rainy season, and the roof in particular is in, I won't say bad shape, it's in fair to middling shape. But there, we're going to have to pull out some of the decking material. And we're going to include that as part of our next demolition phase. So, not only, we can't go in and demolish the roof and pull out everything without rebuilding it. So, we're going ahead and including that in the next phase of that. And that should start, what are we projected it starting? Yeah. Jackie, you've got to come up here and speak into the microphone, please, sir. No, just sit down right there. And now, let me make a comment, too, while he's coming up. Cooper Construction, aside from the fact that we've selected them as our contractors, have also committed to us that they're going to move their headquarters facilities to the historic northwest.
All right.
And the building there themselves.
Seventh and...
Tamarind, is it?
Yeah.
Seventh and Tamarind.
Wonderful.
So, we're expected to be there probably within the next 24 months or less.
Right.
But to answer the question regarding the roofing project commencement, we're scheduled to start that within the next two weeks. There is some specialty material. The pearlings are a special-treated wood. So, those are items that are shelf items. So, we're currently working with the roofing subcontractor to procure those materials now. And as soon as those materials hit the site, that's when we'll actually start the roofing.
When will it be done?
Done? Well, we have...
No comment.
Well, we have in the schedule, 12-month construction duration. So, as soon as the drawings are 100% CDs and we are issued the permit, we anticipate 12-month duration.
Thank you. Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you. Is there a place where I can get a one-stop shop of what our project costs here? Understanding we're talking about historic renovation in particular, which can change quite frequently. Between the acquisition of land and the different phases of projects, is there an overview somewhere that maybe I just haven't been privy to?
We haven't gotten one because all of this is moving targets, Commissioner.
For this project or for all project?
For this project.
Oh, okay.
Up to this point, all we've had is the initial acquisition of the dirt, and we've had demolition costs, and now we're having soft costs from the architects. So, it's kind of growing as we go along, as I indicated. His price is a guaranteed maximum price. So, he wants to... As I indicated, his, his price is a guaranteed maximum price, so he wants to be rock-hard on it. So, as he gets his information, literally, we have weekly meetings with our architect and with the contractors, and they're developing that. So, when I get a little closer, I'll put together a site there, everybody can review on that. But right now, those are moving targets. We literally are getting numbers from the park designers and from Alfonso on Sticks Alley as we go through the project. So, as we decide on a design, it looks like it's appropriate, we like the way it works, he works up some hail mary numbers. They're never right, so then we have to go--
Well, maybe when you get all the information, you could do something like we've done for our capital projects. We just lay out a timeline of what's being done when. So, if you go into the website, look at the capital projects that we have. Maybe we could do something similar for this one. Fisher, an earring?
Just a quick, thank you for the update. A question that, not necessarily for today, but a question that I've asked before. You know, we talked about selling the shotgun homes and to local businesses, which I think is a really good idea. The Sunset in particular, you know, one day I'm hoping to get this question answered in terms of what is going to be our philosophy five years from now, 10 years from now, around the city and its ownership of the Sunset. Again, not for today, but I think a really, really important question to the community about, as best as we can, you know, looking into the future, knowing that conditions change, et cetera, et cetera. But what is the goal of this administration, of this group of folk we're here today, in terms of how we think about this project a decade from now?
I can tell you, short-term, none of us want to run, none of us think the city or the CRA ought to run the Sunset when it's up and functioning, that we need outside professional people to do that.
It's a two-part, it's a two-part question, Commissioner, and the mayor is absolutely right. I have absolutely no desire to run a nightclub. But we may have the ultimate responsibility for it in the interim period while we're doing a transfer. But on a long-term basis, the vision is that we are going to establish in this next year a community foundation, much like the community foundation that exists over here in Hollywood. The community foundation will be looking at projects and ownership of things, investments in this community. And we would like for, at some point, that community foundation and this community to own this building. Now, how we get there is the conversation. How do we recoup some portion of this, literally, $8 million-plus-dollar investments that we are doing in this, in this community? But the goal is for the community to own it and find a way for it to grow and become more valuable, and for them to participate in that appreciation. That's the whole thought process between all of these buildings that we bring to you, is how do we ultimately not own them anymore? The question the community asks me is, how much of this do we want to own? And the answer is none. We don't want to own any of it. But the goal of the redevelopment agency is that we do things that the private sector will not do. And I will tell you that it is fundamentally unsound as a business investment to go over and buy this club in this neighborhood right now. You can't do it, you can't make money in it, and we know that. But that's the goal of government, is to do the kinds of things that are the right things to do for the community that you can't get the private sector to do. So, let's find a way to invest in it, and that community foundation will get us there. And it'll be made up of folks from within and without of the community, and it'll have two components. Frankly, one of them will be a governance kind of a body, and the other will be fundraising, because this will not, I will tell you right now, this will, if you don't remember anything else I say, this will not support itself. Cultural, cultural facilities do not support themselves through earned income. So, we will never sell enough tickets to the ballroom shows to support the ongoing operations. Certainly, the bar will mitigate much of this. The bar and the restaurant, we hope it's successful. I will tell you, I'm talking with Marcus, man, Marcus Samuelson right now about the potential of doing something like that. But we'll be talking in the next year, while we're doing the building, we'll be talking about operations. And that's the only conversation next year, is while this is being built, we'll be talking about how do we, short-term and long-term, operate this thing? Because the day they move out is the day we ought to be having somebody in there putting liquor on the shelves and--
Okay. Thank you. One more question. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. At the community meetings, we talked a lot about hiring local and engaging the local workforce. Can you give us an update on that?
I'll have Veronica answer that question.
Thank you, Commissioner Lambert, for that question. So, yes, at the first two community meetings that we held at Ubikinzi Cultural Community Center, we did talk about engaging the community, making sure that there is workforce on the ground. We aren't at that stage yet where we're going to have active workers. Once we move past the roofing stage, we will have a community meeting that specifically works towards the subcontractors that will be on through the duration of construction. So, we'll have additional meetings for that. We'll have our subcontractors reach out directly to the community, making sure that there's some kind of job fair that will employ the community that are available and interested in working on the project.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward.